All right. Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Well, good evening, everybody. It is Tuesday, May 4th, 2021. It is 7:05 PM. And welcome to the May 4th meeting of the Edina City Council. The meeting's being held electronically to comply with Governor Walz's Stay Safe Minnesota order and to ensure the safety of all of our residents and our staff. So to do that, all members of the council, the staff and the presenters are participating from their homes or offices, just like we have been doing for, I think, over a year now. Before we begin, there's a few things that we need to cover with those listening in and hoping to participate in portions of the meeting. As you know, the city's committed to continuing to receive and absorb your input on different matters. We collect input in different ways. We do it through the voicemail at City Hall, our engagement website, BetterTogetherEdina.org. It's important for all of you to know that all public hearing comments or other comments for the council are read before we take action. You don't need to submit additional communication in any other way. Your communications will be considered equally regardless of the way in which they were submitted. Tonight, we don't have any public hearing matters. We've only got community comment as the mechanism for people to call in and make comment via telephone during that community comment portion of the agenda. You can talk to the council about anything that's not on the agenda tonight or anything that's scheduled for a future public hearing. So if you want to call in for community comment, I'm going to give you that number now so you can get ready for it. It'll come up fairly quickly in the agenda. It's 800-374-0221, 800-374-0221. The conference ID is 465-6425, 465-6425. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our city manager, Scott Neal, will be the timer. He'll let you know when the three minutes is up and you'll need to wrap up then as quickly as we can have you do so to keep everybody treated in a fair manner here. So thanks in advance for your patience as we work to conduct this meeting with over 20 folks working from different locations with different types of software. It's a difficult process, but we've been doing it fairly effectively for over a year. And we need to continually thank our staff for that, being able to let us communicate effectively with the people in our community. So now let's call the meeting to order. And Kirk Allison, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
And look who showed up right on time, Councilmember Staunton.
Sorry, I'm late. I'm here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here.
Next matter on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening. Does anyone wish to modify the agenda in any form or fashion? Staff or council members? Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as published?
So moved.
Second. Member Anderson, seconds. The approval of the meeting agenda is shown. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Clerk Allison, with respect to approval of the meeting agenda.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. The meeting agenda is approved as published. And for those that were listening in, we are now at community comment, so it comes up quickly. If you want to call in again, 800-374-0221, conference ID 465-6425. An operator will ask for your name and street address. You'll be getting, you'll be put in the queue. And then Director Benarott will bring you into the council for your three minutes to be able to speak to the council on a matter of concern to you. It cannot involve anything on the agenda this evening for purposes of due process or a future public hearing matter. So Director Benarott, do we have anybody in the queue for community comment?
Good evening, Mayor Hovland, members of the council. At this time, I do not have anyone who has called in or indicating a desire to speak. As you know, though, there is a slight delay in the broadcast. So I would recommend we give people another minute or so in case they'd like to call in. My clock shows that it's 7:10. I will come back with you at 7:11 or when I have a caller, whichever is first.
Thank you.
Mayor Hovland, members of the council, it's been a minute and I still don't have any callers, so I think it's safe for you to move on with the agenda.
All right. Thank you, Director Benarott. What we do immediately following community comment after each city council meeting is we have the city manager respond to community comments that were made in the prior meeting. Manager Neal, I don't recall any comments, but I'll turn to you now and to find out if there were some comments you need to respond to from the prior meeting. You're on mute.
There were no comments at our prior meeting.
All right. Very good. Thank you. The next thing on the agenda is the consent agenda items. And I know that some council members expressed in advance to our city manager, they wish to have some items removed from the consent agenda. I think that, remember, you guys can confirm for me, but this is Roman 6H. Member Jackson wanted to remove the Transportation Commission work plan modification for discussion. And then Member Anderson wanted to remove what would be 6I and 6L, the traffic safety report, and also the potential appointment of former council member Mary Brindle to represent the city on the noise oversight committee. Was I correct in reading Manager Neal's note correctly? Manager Neal?
And yes, you were, Mr. Mayor. And also, staff would like to request the removal of item M. That's the item that was going to approve a revised 2021 calendar for the council. That action is not, is no longer necessary, so we can remove that from the agenda altogether.
Okay. Very good. All right. With respect to 6H, Member Jackson, the Transportation Commission work plan modification, proposed modification, you had an inquiry on that?
I did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the modification is to look at the bike and ped plan along the proposed bus rapid transit route. And I believe that goes up and down France. I met with the Morningside Neighborhood Association earlier this year, and they expressed a desire to have a safer crosswalk at 42nd Street on France. And I checked in with them. They have not yet submitted that request. But I hope that the Transportation Commission can include the feasibility of adding a crosswalk at 42nd Street when they look at how traffic along France is going to change for pedestrians and bike riders with the new BRT. So just to include the consideration of a crosswalk there in their review, if they would be so kind.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Milner, do you have any comment on that?
Just that we will make sure that's included in their review and we'll talk to the transportation planner to make sure that he understands that. He already does. We're aware of it. But as he has discussions on these very specific projects to go forward. So thank you, Member Jackson.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Milner. Member Jackson, would you care to move 6H, which is the adoption of the Transportation Commission work plan modification?
Yes, I will move 6H, the Transportation Commission work plan modification.
Thank you. Second. Second from Member Staunton. All right. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, with respect to the approval of 6H. Clerk Allison?
Right here, Mr. Mayor. Sorry for the delay. Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye.
6H is approved.
Before going on to the next item, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remind you that we do need to take a motion to approve the agenda, the consent agenda. We didn't do that one. Or did I miss that?
Oh, thank you for that. Yeah, thank you. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of items H, I, L, and M?
So moved.
Second.
Member Anderson moves. Member Pierce, seconds. The motion has stated, any further discussion? Roll call, please, with respect to the adoption of the items on the consent agenda with the exception of 6H, I, L, and M.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. Consent agenda with the exception of 6H, I, L, and M is approved. We've also approved item 6H. Now on to 6I, which Member Anderson asked be pulled, which is a potential approval of the traffic safety report of March 30, 2021. Member Anderson?
Yes, thank you. Item A1 is, that concerns a accessible on-street parking permit on 3935 West 49th Street. I own that building, and so I think it best to recuse.
All right. Very good. Thank you for that. Is there a motion to approve the traffic? Let's see, the approve the traffic safety report of March 30, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
Member Staunton moves. Member Jackson, seconds. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, with respect to potential approval of the traffic safety report of March 30, 2021.
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
He's recusing.
He's recusing. Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that. Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. The traffic safety report of March 30, 2021 is approved. And then, Member Anderson, you also asked us to pull item 6L, which was the potential appointment of former council member Mary Brindle to represent the city on what's called the noise oversight committee at the Metropolitan Airports Commission.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I simply wanted to note that former member Brindle is stepping forward on a volunteer basis to continue to represent the city's interests on the noise oversight commission. She has done a spectacular job on that in the past. It often, her work there is often relegated to the end of an agenda and sometimes very late at night. And yet, we all know, all residents of the community know, that the airplane noise has been a concern, continues to be a concern. I just wanted to, prior to this vote, I wanted to thank former member Brindle for her work in this area and to recognize, I think, her willingness to step forward and volunteer for important work that we probably will only hear a report on every two weeks going forward. But just to note her continued involvement, it's appreciated.
Yes. Thank you, Member Anderson. Would you care to move that item on the consent agenda?
I would. I would move to approve the appointment of Mary Brindle to represent the city on the noise oversight commission at the Metropolitan Airport Commission.
Thank you. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Second by Member Pierce. Motion by Member Anderson to appoint Mary Brindle to represent the city of Edina on the noise oversight committee at the Metropolitan Airports Commission. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Clerk Allison?
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. The motion's approved. And the only, before we depart the consent portion of the agenda, the only observation I wanted to make was with respect to item 6N, which is resolution accepting donations. It's always nice to recognize the people that are making donations to the city of Edina. And so this reporting period, the donations were to the Park and Rec Department. And James Roden, R-O-D-I-N, donated $3,550 for a memorial bench and tree at Bretisson Park. Thank you, Mr. Roden. William Davis, $700 for a tree at Roslin Park. And Melissa Mendez, $3,200 for a bench, a bench at Bretisson Park. So thank you to those residents, I assume, of Edina that are donating those items to the city in memory of a loved one. So thanks very much. Now we're going to move on to the special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda. The first item there is the proclamation involving National Police Week 2021. And Sergeant Nate Mendel is here from our police department to accept the proclamation. And the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the week of May 9th through the 15th, 2021 is National Police Week throughout the United States. And whereas there are approximately 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Edina Police Department. And whereas nearly 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in approximately 18,000 injuries. And whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, over 22,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas 360, 360 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Memorial in May 2021. The memorial currently honors a total of 22,524 fallen officers on the wall. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's annual candlelight vigil to be held on May 13th, 2021. And whereas the candlelight vigil is part of National Police Week, which will take place this year with a virtual candlelight vigil on May 13th. And whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all the fallen officers and their families. And US flags will be flown at half-staff on May 15th. And now therefore, the city council of the city of Edina, Minnesota hereby proclaims May 9th through the 15th, 2021 as National Police Week in the city of Edina and calls upon the people of Edina to observe this week in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep the residents and the city of Edina safe. Is there a motion to adopt the proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
All right. We got a motion by Member Pierce, second by Member Staunton, to adopt National Police Week as May 9th through the 15th, 2021. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Clerk Allison, with respect to the proclamation.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. Sergeant Mendel, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Thank you for the proclamation, Mr. Mayor, and for the council. I'm Nate Mendel. I'm one of the sergeants for the Edina Police Department. So far in 2021, there have been 119 line-of-duty deaths for law enforcement, including one in Minnesota. It's essential that we remember these fallen officers as someone's child, brother, sister, mother, or father. Law enforcement is a unique and challenging profession, and the difficulties our officers face will continue to challenge us. It's important to know that our officers in Edina will continue to respond to these challenges with compassion, integrity, and care for the community. We work for the best department in the state, and we are fortunate to serve the best community. Thank you for your continued support and the opportunity to be here tonight.
Thank you, Sergeant Mendel. Also, I just want to confirm with you, and I think the folks on the council and people at home may be interested in this, that in conjunction with National Police Week, on Tuesday, next Tuesday, May 11th, at 9:00 in the morning, we'll do a flag raising ceremony and have some brief comments right in front of City Hall with respect to the officers that are available. And so folks should feel comfortable about coming over and participating in that ceremony. Do you want to speak anything, say anything further about that event?
Well, thank you. Thank you for being there and having some kind words for us, Mr. Mayor. We really appreciate it.
All right. And so council members, you're sure welcome to join all of us. And that's next Tuesday, May 11th, 9:00 o'clock in the morning for that flag raising ceremony. And others in the public that are hearing this proclamation, you're welcome to join us as well. All right. Thank you, Sergeant. And then we have one other proclamation. That's National Public Works Week. And Brian Olson with us, our Public Works Director, to accept this proclamation. And that, this proclamation reads as follows. National Public Works Week, May 16th through the 22nd, 2021. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, and streets. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. Whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is widely dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, it's, if the proclamation has me making this proclamation, but I think the city council of the city of Edina should hereby proclaim the week of May 16th through the 22nd, 21, as National Public Works Week in the city of Edina. And we call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials and employees make every day to our public health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Is there a motion to adopt May 16th through the 22nd, 2021, as National Public Works Week in the city of Edina?
So moved.
Member Anderson moves. Member Jackson, seconds. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, with respect to the proclamation as stated. Clerk Allison?
Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. The proclamation is adopted in May 16th through the 22nd, 2021, is hereby declared to be National Public Works Week by the Edina City Council in the city of Edina. And as I mentioned earlier, we've got Brian Olson, our Public Works Director, with us this evening. Director Olson, welcome. It's nice to see you.
Thank you. Nice to see you as well, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for reading and approving this proclamation. As you know, the American Public Works Association every year recognizes and creates a theme for National Public Works Week. This year's theme is Stronger Together. This, this, this year's theme challenges our citizens to think about the role public works plays in creating a great place to live. By working together, the impact citizens and public works professionals can have on their community is magnified and results in the ability to accomplish goals once thought unattainable. We value our community and the role the Public Works Department and engineering professionals play in keeping them safe and functioning smoothly. For the last 61 years, National Public Works Week is designed to increase public awareness of their contributions and enlighten the public about the duties, practices, and goals of public works professionals. This year is no different. The last year is no different. And even more emphasized, the role public works and engineering staff have played in the civil unrest and maintaining a safe work environment during the COVID pandemic. In 2020, I'm proud to say that we maintained all existing service levels for almost the entire year while keeping our employees and residents safe. The public works and engineering department took it upon themselves to join together and face the adversity and challenge each other to stay on top of the service requests throughout the year. So thank you for reading and approving the proclamation declaring May 16th through the 22nd of National Public Works Week and for me to represent your public works department along with the employees this evening.
Thank you, Clerk Allison.
I just have one other comment. I would also like to say, it's the community as a whole with their patience throughout this past year. Edina is truly a step ahead of the rest of the nation, and we are better together.
Thank you for that. You know, typically during Public Works Week, you would have some kind of event at the public works facility. Have you thought about doing that in the fall? It seems like particularly the kids love to come over and see the equipment and I think their parents as well. What are you thinking about relative to open house?
Yeah. So last year was supposed to be our biannual year. We did not have it clearly because of COVID. We are expecting to have it again next spring.
Okay.
So that we can enjoy the smiles on the faces of the kids. We really do enjoy passing on our passion for public works to those, those kids.
All right. Well, your, your team did another magnificent job during the wintertime. Sure, there were a lot of kids that didn't like the work you were doing so efficiently. They didn't get any snow days like here. I didn't hear about any of my grandkids grousing though, so. And the city looks just terrific. You've been doing a great job. And I'm sure on this pothole thing, you should maybe tell people how to get ahold of your department to get some potholes filled with that 311.
I would love to, Mr. Mayor. We have, Edina 311 is one option for people to use. It's an app, a mobile app, that they can take a picture really quickly and send it to the city. We also have the ability to, as I mentioned, get on the website for Better Edina, Better Together. They also have the ability to get on the website, our city website. There's a reporter problem there. They can also call, yield back in wait, and we will create a service request for them. And I think that 30, oh, and then if it's after hours, they have the ability to call either non-emergency dispatch, which is 952-826-1610. And we do have public work supervisors that are on call if there is an emergency, so they can refund 24 hours a day.
That's good. Thank you. I know that I've had folks tell me over the past few weeks that they couldn't believe it, that they took a photo of a pothole, sent it in on 311, and a crew was out there, sometimes within a few hours, to fill that pothole. And they were really impressed. So they were feeling good about, very good about Edina.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will pass that compliment down to the staff that actually do the work.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Anything else from council members? All right. Well, thanks for being with us this evening, Director Olson.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to move on to the next portion of the agenda now, which was reports and recommendations. We have Heidi Lee, our Race and Equity Coordinator, with us this evening. Who's going to present the newly amended bias event response plan tonight to us. And I don't know if Manager Neal, you have any comments in advance, or do you want to go right to Ms. Lee?
I want to go right to Ms. Lee. They've been working on this at the commission level and at the police department service level, and it's ready to go for the council tonight.
All right. Very good. Ms. Lee, welcome. It's nice to see you again. We just saw you about a half an hour ago. But always good to have you with us. So we look forward to your presentation here with respect to the work that you've been doing with the police department and with the Human Rights and Relations Commission on our bias, bias event response plan. Go ahead, please.
Thank you so much. And while I'm speaking, I will go ahead and start sharing my screen. So what you should be seeing on the screen is a presentation that says Bias Event Response Plan. And so just to say good evening to you, Mayor, and council members. Thank you for having me at tonight's meeting to present the Bias Event Response Plan to provide revisions to the council or to the plan after the initial presentation to council on March 16th of 2021. To recap, from the initial presentation, the Bias Offense Response Plan was adopted by city council on May 5th, 1997. The HRC was directed by a council to review the plan each year and to provide recommendations as needed. The last revisions of the plan were completed in 2017. In the 2020 HRC work plan, the commission was charged to review the plan, add definitions that differentiated between bias incidents- In the 2020 HRRC work plan, the commission was charged to review the plan, add definitions that differentiated between bias incidents and bias offenses within the Minnesota State Statute, as well as include tracking and notification process for bias incidents. Based on the feedback that was provided from the March 16 City Council meeting, the HRRC Subcommittee added information about adding bias, bias event, bias offense and bias incident and changing the plan name to Bias Event Response Plan in the introduction. The definition of bias events was also added, which was that bias event can be a bias offense or bias incident. In addition to that, the by the definition of bias offense is the same definition as it is in Minnesota State Statute 611.79 subdivision 1. So with all of the changes that were made, the staff does recommend City Council to approve the Bias Event Plan as recommended by the HRRC. And so the HRRC and Police Chief work together to update and revise the plan to be able to provide clarity on throughout the process. And so by adding the definitions of bias, bias event, bias offense and incident, more clarity will be provided to the HRRC on how they can provide support in the process and response. And so before I end, I would also like to thank the Human Rights and Relations Commission Subcommittee, Commissioners Ross Edwards Guadarramara, Chair Epstein and former Commissioner Nelson, who recently cycled off the commission, Police Chief Nelson and City Attorney Soren Matic for their work in updating this response plan.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Are there questions for Ms. Lee or comments by council members with regard to the potential updating of this plan? Member Jackson?
Yes, thank you. I want to say thank you to Heidi and to the HRRC past and present members. I know this is something that's been worked on for quite a while. I just kind of want to explain to the public the a little bit of a story behind this. I believe there was an incident, and I don't remember the year, but where there were some offensive chalk drawings on around the city. And what happened is people reported that to the police and the police said, well, it doesn't rise to the level of a crime. So it wasn't reported then to the HRRC. And so there was a gap in our ability to track and respond to these types of ugly incidents. So I'm really pleased to have this new updated policy so that when something like that happens, we do make a note of it and we it gets reported to the Human Rights and Relations Commission so that they can fashion a response. So it's a it's a really important addition to our toolbox. And the other thing I want to say is that another part of equity is to the plain language policy that we have in the city, and it was really important to make sure this was worded in a in a really understandable way. And so equity is being able to understand as well as as to take action. So I want to thank everybody for their hard work, and I'm really, really pleased this is moving forward.
Thank you, Member Jackson. Other questions or comments? Member Jackson, would you care to move the approval of the updated Bias Event Response Plan?
I would be pleased to move it.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Anderson. We've got a motion and a second to approve the updated Bias Event Response Plan that's been presented to us this evening by Heidi Lee. Any further discussion? Roll call please with respect to the motion as stated, Clerk Allison.
Councilmember Staunton.
Hi.
Councilmember Anderson.
Hi.
Councilmember Jackson.
Hi.
Councilmember Pierce.
Hi.
Mayor Hovland.
Hi. The motion's approved. The updated Bias Event Response Plan is adopted by the council. Thank you to the HRRC and to you, Ms. Lee, for your guidance for that group. It's been a terrific sort of partnership, I think. And Manager Neil, did you have your hand in the air?
I did not.
Okay, all right. I thought I saw you shift and raise your arm, and I thought you had a response as well. You can sure join in the praise of Ms. Lee if you wish.
I will. I enjoy working with her every day.
Very good. All right, Ms. Lee, thanks for being with us this evening.
Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Both occasions.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. See you later. All right, we are moving on. Now, that that was curiously the only item we had in that portion of the agenda, which is an unusual thing. They have only one item in the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda. Sounds like from what we heard earlier that there will be busier nights to come here, the middle of May and onward from there. Commission correspondents, I suppose we have not had anything come in while we've been meeting this evening, Clerk Allison or Manager Neil?
No, we have not.
Okay, very good. Aviation noise update. Did you get anything from former member Brindle on that, Manager Neil?
I did not, only that we did her appointment tonight and we'll pass that appointment on to the Metropolitan Airports Commission tomorrow.
All right. Mayor and council comments. Member Jackson, you want to lead off?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have
Member Jackson, yeah, this is this, I wanted you to lead off because I wanted to have you address what you want the council to be thinking about with respect to engagement of some of our state legislators regarding police reform. You had some language around that, and I think it's important that you lead off on this.
Well, thank you. I have a couple other things too, but I can do that afterwards. So I we were I was received a request for the City of Edina to weigh in on police accountability legislation at the legislature. And I think it's important that we as a city make a statement that that we want to see continued work in this area. Think that the Chauvin trial and the verdict is a beginning, not an end, and I'd like to make a public statement about that. And I think it's important that we support our legislators who are working on this as well. I did draft a statement. I've received some comments on it, so I'm completely open to changes to this, but should I read it? Is that the best thing to do?
I think so. I've got a written copy of it in front of me, and I'm sure everybody else does too, because it was circulated late this morning by Manager Neil. So folks
Yeah, the public has not heard it, so I'm happy to read it.
I think to read it, reading it is good, and then we can talk about it.
Yes. So the statement reads, "On April 21st, 2021, upon hearing the guilty verdict in the Chauvin trial, Mayor James Hovland expressed the feelings of the City of Edina, saying, 'There is much to do to continue advancing racial justice in Edina and beyond.' The City of Edina supports additional police reform measures that will address unacceptable racial disparities and injustice in the state of Minnesota. We strongly encourage the Minnesota Legislature to pass police reform measures in 2021 using the February 2020 report by the State of Minnesota Working Group on Police Involved Deadly Force Encounters as a guideline. The City of Edina recognizes that police peace officer reform is not a partisan issue. We also recognize the service of all the peace officers who serve our community with integrity and compassion. We urge the Legislature to continue its work on justice and pass police reform this session."
Thank you for
That was a circulated statement. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for reading that. And and did you get some comments from some of the council members?
I did. A couple of things. One is I got a comment and Member Pierce might want to talk about this, that we need to recognize that work's not done in Edina either. It's not finished here. That it's important that that we look at our own house as well as encouraging the Legislature to act. And I had a conversation with Member Anderson about just the fear that people feel when they're being pulled over. And one of the things that I know from my past experience in working on legislation is that while we as city members and city council members understand where our borders are, most people don't think about the borders between Richfield and Edina and Bloomington and Edina. And that when a police officer pulls them over, they just know that they have to pull over and and they don't necessarily think, oh, that's an Edina police officer. And so I think it's important that not only that we do work here, but that there be work done statewide so that no matter where you're going, people feel safe and know that the police are on the side of justice. So those were the comments that I got. So I don't know. I have a shorter statement, but you know, we can we can mess with this, or we can just say something very short, but I do think it's important that we say something.
Do you have the shorter statement you could also read?
I do. The City of Edina or the Edina City Council recognizes after the Chauvin verdict, "There is much to do to continue advancing racial justice in Edina and beyond." "To that end, we support law enforcement accountability measures with the ultimate goal that all Minnesotans know that peace officers are on the side of justice." So that's really short and a lot bigger, but but I think it is at every level of government.
Thoughts from other council members about whether we ought to be providing a statement of some type from the Edina City Council to the Legislature on this police reform issue that's in front of them? And if so, in what form?
Mr. Mayor, go ahead. Go ahead, Member Anderson.
Oh, I was just gonna, can I don't know if you can see me. I've lost video connection here.
We can't see you.
We can see you.
Oh, interesting. I can't see you. In any event, I I just wanted to mention that and actually thank Member Jackson for directing me to, you know, I called her earlier in the day and he said, what am I voting on here tonight? What are we? What are we doing? And she drew my attention to the recommendations made from the Working Group on Police Involved Deadly Force Encounters. And I I just, and I said this earlier tonight, I would repeat it again. It is, there the recommendations made here are so on point and also so evenly balanced between concerns for the public as well as the welfare for law enforcement officers. And I I I think that any statement that we make should actually reference at least their recommendations. They're they're very powerful and yet succinct, and they're readily available to anybody. Member Jackson, I know has a link and can provide it. It could go on to the city's website. I I think it's important to note that fear is real for people. And to the degree that our community experiences fear, that any of our residents experiences fear or even speaks of it. I think it's I think it's important to note that earlier tonight, Member Staunton said that that talked about the 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 public safety, excuse me, I'm
Public health.
Public health, thank you. As a concern, as it relates to these issues, public safety is is tantamount to to actions that occur in the street. And and I I just think that that when we, when somebody says that they're fearful, they're not making that up. They are. And and yet we also know that when you fear, you create fear. And so what we, I think what we want to try to do as a city is to offset fear as much as possible. How that happens and how that's addressed, that's that's a question mark. I think we have to to find ways to do so. But I just wanted to follow up on that. I'm sorry I can't see you. I feel a little disoriented here, but thank you.
You look good. All right, Member Pierce.
Yeah, I just a couple of comments. I really appreciate the effort to to draft something here. My, the the thing that I'm trying to focus on and Member Jackson has talked about it is is action. And I just think it is, it's more powerful for us to say as a council, here is what we believe. And we as a council want to urge the state representatives to move forward in this space. And here is what we're doing at the city. And so that's that's the frame for me. I just think it's really important for people to hear what we believe as a council and what we're going to do as a city to address this. And the the other point that Member Jackson made that I actually hadn't even thought about until she said it. When we talk about fear, I actually don't think about it's irrespective of city. So if I am in Brooklyn Center or Eden Prairie or Minneapolis, I actually don't pay any attention if the side of the car says Edina or Brooklyn Center or state trooper, right? It doesn't matter to me. I respect the the office. I respect the the officers, no matter where they're where they're where they are or where they park their vehicles at night. And so I do think there's immense value in saying as a state we need to take action. And then locally, whatever we can do within our jurisdiction, we're committed to doing that. And so I I I liked the second version, but only Member Jackson, because you said City Council versus the City of Edina. If you had the first longer version, and if we as a council are comfortable with that, I think that would be awesome. And then I think if if anybody is watching our meetings, especially the last few, they should know that we've had conversations around this topic. And the last thing I want to say, I'm kind of doing my comments in the middle of Member Jackson's. As an ally, and I I think it's really awesome, and I wanted to thank Ron after the Member Anderson, after our working session, the comments that he made about fear and referencing feedback that I gave in a previous meeting. And all of you actually have referenced that, and I just don't want to lose the the point. I don't want you to lose the point that as allies, it is immensely important and meaningful to hear people express. It made me feel heard and seen. And what I am trying to say is there are members in our community that need to hear that too, and they need to feel that as a city council and as a city, we hear them, we understand that there's fear, and we're not going to just keep talking about it and listening. That's all great, right? We have to do that, but we're about putting together some actions so that we can abate some of that that fear and have everybody feel the same sense of of community that others feel. So. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for those comments. Member Staunton, you had some I thought very insightful things to share at the work session.
Well, I I can't add anything else. I I would I would I'd be supportive of the first statement substituting the city for their city council for the City of Edina. And would make that as a motion if it's helpful.
I I interlinated in that second paragraph, the City Council of the City of Edina, support.
That's fine, too.
Yeah. So if you want to make that motion to adopt proposed statement number one from Member Jackson with that change, we'll we'll act on that matter.
So moved.
And just to be clear, I'll second it. That there's the term City of Edina appears three times, so we want to make that change in all three places. So in the first paragraph, it says, "Express the feelings of the City of Edina." And Mayor Hovland, in your statement, the second paragraph starts the City of Edina, and then the third paragraph also begins the City of Edina. So we'd want to make that all three times.
I think you can make it the City Council of the City of Edina the first time and then City Council thereafter.
Okay.
Yeah, that works.
Great. Thank you for that clarification.
A fun group edit.
And efficient, too.
Yeah, robotic.
All right, we've got a motion and we have a second. Is any further discussion? Roll call please, Clerk Allison, with respect to adoption of the statement as read and slightly modified.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. The statement as proposed by Member Jackson with that slight modification to make sure folks understand it's the city council, the city of Edina, that is embracing these notions, is approved. And we will get that over to the folks, I don't know if this is in front of a conference committee, but we'll get it to wherever it needs to go. Manager Neil is nodding his head affirmatively, it's a conference committee. We'll get it to our state reps and our state senator, and they can do what they think is appropriate with it in terms of getting it to the conferees. Thank you, everybody. All right, and then, Member Jackson, you had a couple other things you wanted to cover as well.
I did, thank you. So I listened to the Planning Commission discussion on Wednesday evening, and I really am worried about the traffic on 50th between 100 and Wooddale. And my husband and I have walked that a couple of times, just sort of checking out the sidewalks and the bikeability and everything. And I really would like the Transportation Commission and the staff, at some point, to put on their agenda, sooner rather than later, what can be done to make that a safer strip of road, and then also looking at the pedestrian and bike lanes around City Hall. It's, it's quite dangerous to try and get around on, on your own power without a vehicle. And I, I am deeply moved by the stories that I've been getting through emails and in meetings with the Sunny Slope neighborhood. And I just, it, it seems inconceivable to me that they have that beautiful neighborhood, and it's so dangerous to get in and out of. So I really strongly urge something to be done. I don't know the exact steps, but whether it's the Transportation Commission or staff or both, I'd really like to see that happen. And the second thing is, I want to say thank you, a huge Minnesota thank you, to the Complete Count Committee of Edina, Chair Felton and his team. You know, we're number one in the nation in volunteer returns on the census, and, and I'm just so proud of our team for doing that, and I want to give them a big shout out, and good job. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Member Jackson, let's go to Director Milner, because I think this issue with respect to what's been proposed by some of the residents over in the Sunny Slope neighborhood, is something that has, in fact, caught the attention of Director Milner and his team. And I wanted to make that same point with respect to West 66th Street that I walk on almost every night, where I'm seeing now speeds easily in excess of 50 miles an hour, because it's just, it's, it's more like a A minor arterial than anything else, and there's no biking on there either. I think those are two streets, two through streets that could be, and should be addressed, maybe simultaneously, to see if we can make some improvements there to calm traffic, and maybe affect volume as well. Director Milner?
Yeah, thank you, members of the council, mayor. We're excited. We love the buy-in on our bike ped master plan. So this is exactly what we hoped when we started to create the PACS fund and these master plans. So both of those facilities that have brought up, 50th Street and 66th, both have planned improvements for bike and peds. It's just a matter of programming those in, finding those opportunities, finding the capital to do those types of improvements. So we have lots and lots of gaps, the needs on the system, and we're just looking for those opportunities to make those improvements. So both those, both those areas you both mentioned are on that master plan.
I, I, I'm also concerned, though, about the dangerous ability to turn left into Sunny Slope, that without a left turn lane there, people are getting rear-ended. And, and it's just, I, I know you and I have talked about this, it's, it's on a hill, on a curve, with, with fully grown trees, but boy, it's dangerous. And so I, I hope that we can look at the traffic there as well.
Yep. Thank you for those comments, Member Jackson.
Anything further, Member Jackson, on that topic or others?
No, I'm done. Thank you very much.
Yeah, very good. Member Pierce, back to you. Did you have anything further for the good of the order?
I did not. Thank you.
All right. Member Anderson?
Just a, a minor note, that 60% of our group of five here has been bitten by the technology bug tonight. I find it interesting. And I wish I could see you guys, but, but wait, you can see me, so.
Chuckle.
All right, all right. And then, Member Staunton?
I can't blame mine on technology. It was just a little count under mismanagement, but thank you all for your patience. I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to upset the city clerk's timing here, stretching out, trying to get her right on time and win the over instead of the under, but-
Nine minutes.
Yeah, see-
That's exactly what I said.
But I have nothing else other than that. Thank you.
All right, just a few things for me. Couple of interesting things. Over at the TAB, we've got a unique project work group going, or looking at, you know, innovation and unique projects that, that might be scored in a different way. We're also working on transportation equity issues over there. And that's going to be an important thing as we move along here, too, as we think about projects, for example, like the restoration of the Rondo neighborhood through potential lid over 494 and, or over 94. And I know I shouldn't use the word lid in Edina in a public meeting, but that's what it is over there, St. Paul. We, see what else quickly. Minnesota Mayors Together meeting was on the 27th. We've got a few new mayors we added to that group from Marshall, Grand Marais, and Richfield. New topics that we're looking at, I mentioned briefly in our work session, when we called Dave Unmack over at the League of Minnesota Cities to ask him what mayors across the state should be working on beyond broadband. It was mental health. It's affecting every community across the state, so it's something that we need to keep in mind, too, and we've addressed that with our Community Health Commission. Also doing the race and equity work through the Edina Community Foundation. Then I had an interesting meeting with the, with some of the folks at the MAC. We've been thinking about this recovering economy, and starting to think about the role of the airport, the revitalized role of the airport as passenger traffic starts to come back, but wondering about this notion of, you know, having all your eggs in one basket, which in the case of the airport is passengers. What about freight? What about cargo? You know, should we be thinking about increasing that business? Not necessarily through this existing airport, because they've only got 19 acres out there for expansion, but what about that study they did several years ago, I think it was in the late 90s now, of the potentiality for a freight airport out in the Rosemont area, and that's 5,000 acres, it's owned by the university out there. So I got backgrounded on that, so I understood that effort a little bit better. And then, I had a meeting today with Peter Frosch from Greater MSP, and Karen Doer, the director, executive director of the Regional Council of Mayors. And the question there was, how can our region make the best of this funding opportunity at the federal level? So we think about the elements of the American Rescue Plan and the infrastructure bill that the president has proposed, and the potentiality for earmarking coming back. Are there some things that we should be starting to think about on a regional level, where we can work together with cities across the region? So that was, that's in a very preliminary sort of state. And more on that later. So that's it for me. Manager Neil?
Thank you, Your Honor. Two things for me tonight. One, I mentioned earlier at the very start of the meeting tonight, and that is that we are starting to get some, some early information, intelligence from our lobbyists in St. Paul, that we should expect that we will need to go back into a live council meeting session, likely in July, if things keep going the way they're going. So we are making plans to, to do that, you know, and starting to try to shape what that might look like in terms of incorporating some of the practices that we've developed over the last year for, for folks to join us remotely. How do we adjust our council chambers with Plexiglas to make things safe? What are the practices we need to do for our microphones to keep them clear, et cetera? So we are looking at, we are looking at that as sort of our planning horizon, and we'll be talking more about that with council members as we move it forward. The second thing, the mayor mentioned also at the start of the meeting was a water audit that we've completed with our finance department. We've completed a rather important audit of our, of our water meters, and making sure that some of our bigger customers, bigger, biggest customers are metered the right way, and more importantly, are charged the right way. We found some that were charged too much for their water, we found some that have been charged too little for their water. So we're in the process now of making some of those adjustments on a customer-by-customer basis to bring them into compliance with city code with regards to utility payments. I'll, I'll prepare a report on that. I'll work with the finance director to prepare a report on that, and I'll share that with the council at an upcoming meeting.
Very good. I think the council may have been having a discussion about situations where, and they may, they, they may differ in their factual patterns, but situations where certain condominium associations, for example, may have been undercharged, and now we're seeking compensation from them for them using more water than they paid for. And there are reasons why that happened, probably peculiar to each circumstance, but you can imagine if you're a condominium association and get a note from the city that you might owe tens of thousands of dollars in backwater charges, and you can only go back six years under the statute of limitations, that they're not real pleased about getting that message. So it may be something that we need to deal with at the council level at some point in time, because staff does not want to get in the middle of some negotiation over it. It's going to be our potential decision on how we want to deal with some of these matters. But you can well mention to people that we owe money to, or more than happy to get a check for the full amount. So I don't know where that is either, but we'll, we'll, he'll provide that memorandum at some point in the near future. Anything else, Manager Neil?
That's all I got tonight.
Okay, did that prompt anything from anyone you want to talk about? All right, very good. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce, seconds. Any further discussion?
Always take the under with Sharon Allison.
Take the under. We could talk about it for two minutes.
It's like clockwork. I can ruin the trains at your estimates. You know us too well.
If you're, if you're betting on the over, Member Staunton, was there anything further you wanted to talk about for three minutes?
No, I wouldn't feel good about trying to game the result here.
I think she's going to cut off the conversation and start-
I am, I'm about to do roll call.
Go ahead.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Jackson?
Aye.
Member Pierce?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. We stand adjourned. Good to see you all.